Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, February 14th, 2023 meeting for the Hayden City Council. I'd like to call it to order. May I have a real call of the council members, please, Abby?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest. Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Councilmember Sandra White to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call for any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight. Hearing none, we'll move into the consent calendar. Many of you folks have been here several times before. I know you've heard this before, but city council conducts business five days a week, nine hours a day. Most of the things that the city council, pardon me, that the city staff does works perfectly fine on their own. However, some of the things that city staff does requires the approval or the consent of city council, and that is where the consent calendar comes in. The items that we will be looking at tonight are: Item 1A, approval of the January 24, 2023 city council meeting minutes. 1B, approval of Technique Gymnastics 2023 Contractual Services Agreement. 1C, the approval of Hayden Peak Tennis Center 2023 Contractual Services Agreement. 1D, acceptance of the Mills and Melick Right-of-Way Dedication and Grant of Easement. 1E, approval of the Fields Final Platte. 1F, approval of Jack's Glade Final Platte. 1G, approval of agreement with On Point Sites, Inc. for a Citizens Engagement Survey. 1H, approval of Welch Comeran Association, Inc. On-Call Engineering and Surveying Services Agreement Amendment 1. 1I, approval of On-Call Engineering and Surveying Engineering Services Agreement with Iteris, Inc. 1J, approval of commission appointments for Terry Lee to the Arts Commission, John Spencer to the Veterans Commission, and Douglas Chockkevis, James White, and Tim Torres to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Forestry Commission. 1K, acceptance of the public infrastructure for 841 East Miles Avenue Sewer Extension. 1L, approval of the Hayden Regional Sewer Board and Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility Upgrades Payment Request. 1M, the approval of the Open Arms Family Barn Bash Event Permit Application and Loudspeaker Event. 1N, the approval of Change Order Number 1 for the City Hall Elevator and Remodel. 1O, approval of the gas line work for the City Hall Elevator and Remodel. 1P, approval of the JUB Gateway On-Call GIS Services Contract. 1Q, ratification of the January payroll. 1R, ratification of bills paid on January 25th, 2023. And 1S, approval of bills for payment. Councilmembers have any questions?
Just one comment.
Yes, sir.
This is for discussion, if I may, for G, and it's really just, uh, this is regarding the On-Point Insights Survey, and I would like just to make a comment that if the survey, the survey could be included in the newsletter that is put out by the city, if we could, if that timing works, it would be a very efficient way and very small cost to include that survey, and since it goes out to a lot of people, it would just be an effective way to distribute it, rather than having people just come here and pick up that, that paper survey, although it'll be done digitally also. So that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Mayor? Yes, sir. Councilmember Satterfield.
I just want to, would like to thank all of the people who apply for our commissions, historical arts, veterans, parks. They put in a lot of hours, and they do a great job, and we're fortunate to have people like that step up to the plate to help the city of Hayden. I don't usually do this, but one particular one that's on tonight's agenda is Terry Lee to the Arts Commission. Terry is a world-renowned artist and sculpture, sculptor, and we're very, very fortunate to have a man of that talent be on our Arts Commission. So he would have been on it long ago, but he didn't know we had an Arts Commission, so, but, good guy, too.
All right, thank you. Hearing no more discussion, I entertain a motion on the consent calendar. Someone needs to, come on now, you guys.
A motion to approve consent calendar.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Real call, please, Abby.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
Councilmember, Council President Roder.
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Motion passes. Our item number two, we have visitor public comment. If anyone would like to make any public comment this evening, if you would please fill out a form on the back table there and bring it up to the city clerk. Right now, our first, the only speaker we have up to this moment is Mr. Randy McIntyre. Mr. McIntyre, would you please give your name, yeah, Mr. McIntyre, would you please give your name? And whether or not you are a citizen of Hayden.
My name's Randy McIntyre, live at 12605 North Spike Trail. I'm not a citizen of Hayden, I live in the Impact Area, just at the north boundary.
Thank you, sir.
And I've been asked to just give a quick report from the Hayden Renewal Agency, some projects, some things we've been working on, with the resignation of John Young, Rhonda Mitchell is the new chairperson, and just, just starting, Melissa Cleveland is the new director, and she's taking over for city staff. City staff, I'm sure, is probably still busy helping her to step into that position. Couple of things we've been looking at with the, we've worked quite a bit, city staff has worked quite a bit to bring infrastructure, need, needs of the city's infrastructure priorities to the Urban Renewal Agency, and I think we've recently approved part of the Ramsey Sewer Extension, some work on the Ramsey Sewer Extension, but one thing that is a major item right now is we're looking at expanding the Urban Renewal Agency footprint to some key strategic locations so that we can be involved in assisting with some of the transportation infrastructure currently, I don't know if I should say which one, up and down government way, Urban Renewal Agency does not, portions of property up and down government way that are potential, that need upgrades on the intersections for transportation, the Urban Renewal Agency doesn't, it doesn't have access to those properties, and we're looking at doing some of that, and they're potentially expanding the, expanding it out a little bit further, just to pick up some priorities for the city. I think we're, have good information on that, hopefully it's been, hopefully that information may be shared with city council to, or city staff and city council so that they can let the agency know what their priorities are based on that. One other major thing is there's been a great deal of talk amongst county, the agency members, or that a community center in the city of Hayden has been discussed quite a bit, and we see that is, we think that, our take on it is that the city council has addressed, has discussed this, kind of addressed this back and forth a little bit. Currently, on the staff priorities, it's pushed out quite a few years, and the agency, if they can help with this, they need the city council to let us know if they have, first of all, a taste for building a community center that their agency could assist with, and second of all, if there's any locations that are, at this time, that the city council can see using for that, the agency, if they're going to expand their border, need to make sure that that is either in the existing, that property's in the existing border of the agency, or we can pick up in, in a one-time expansion, pick up any parcels that might be used for a community center. And that's about, that's all I have for today, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre, appreciate that. Anyone else would like to make a comment? Right, I don't see anyone running for the back door, so we will move on. Item number three is new business. First item 3A is the appeal of a staff determination of the right-of-way dedication for Marketplace at Miles and Government Way.
Mayor and council, Rob Wright, city engineer, and you do have a memo in your packet, and as you explained it, it's, it is pretty cut and dried. Developers wanting to develop at the southeast corner of Miles and Government Way. The proposed site plan that was presented to us, I think it had 11 and 1/2 feet of, of right-of-way from base of future curb to, to the right-of-way line, we are requiring 16 feet in order to get a swale and sidewalk in that area, and I think what I'll do is I'll just pull up a app of that, and then I'll let the developer present. Jeremy, is it going to you?
I sent a PowerPoint over, Jeremy Terzulie. I'm here with Tony Velelli. We are the majority owners of that property at 10374 North Government Way. Would have been a lot nicer if I'd have my presentation, but apparently it didn't make it over time to get uploaded, so I'll just try to wing it. This is the property right here, and as Rob pointed out, we submitted a site plan that indicated 11 and 1/2 foot worth of right-of-way, so if you'll allow me to wing it, that would put our right-of-way dedication right about there. Again, I had a site plan laid out where we had an approach coming in, roughly in line where that utility pole is. Up here at the corner, we have a drive-through coffee stand. As you know, this building here has been demolished down here, proposing addition to that building here, the coffee stand in essence sort of stands alone with drive aisles, and then all of my parking is throughout the rest of the property. So we're threading a very tight needle with regard to parking. The overall plan here is to make a retail outlet. The reason being is that Tony and I, in our brokerage partnership, get a lot of requests from smaller mom-and-pop type businesses that can't occupy the traditional 1,500, 2,000, 3,000 square foot retail space. The idea is to give them a 10-foot by 10-foot, or a 10-foot by 20-foot retail outlet inside the building with additional storage for their wares further to the south. We've got a really odd balance between our parking calculations with traditional retail versus the storage accessory to the retail. We spent a lot of time trying to get that ratio right, and so we had two pre-development meetings on this property. Both times, I asked about right-of-way dedication. Rob was unsure on both of those cases. He did offer up the intersection design of what is currently being proposed for the intersection design, using that intersection design, which appears to preserve these two curvatures here, and these crosswalks, and push the improvements to the intersection more to the north with that right turn bay headed west on Miles. Our design allows for a six-foot strip between the curb and the sidewalk. We would use that for stormwater. Our topographic survey shows that this curb line, and ultimately the flow line of the gutter, this is the hot point, pushes it around here, we'll treat that storm. Everything that point east that we've designed will have a very, very, this, this site is very, very flat, so we're going to kind of force grade to the east. We can get stormwater out of the street into that six-foot strip for what's called conveyance. We won't be able to treat it at that point, and then where our approach comes in, it swings around, there'll be an area that my engineers were able to, keep talking. Our engineers were able to basically run the calculations, if we could get the stormwater for that section of roadway treated. This is going to be great if the slide comes up, because it'll make way more sense.
Appreciate it, Donna.
So this is what I was talking about. That's a six-foot strip there. Oh, I can use the cursor. Six-foot strip, we'd be able to convey, and I could do one of two things. I could swing this sidewalk here, loop it back around, or keep it and have it come across here for future right-of-way dedication to the east. We could put a dry well in there, and we could get our stormwater treatment in here. Our proposed property line is here, I have a zoomed-in view there. This would be the 16 and 1/2 foot, and I know it seems insignificant, but this turns into a domino effect. This structure would then have to comport with side yard setbacks, so that shifts down 5 to 5 and 1/2 feet. This shrinks down, in all likelihood, I lose that parking stall, or I lose, or I lose square footage off of my building, which changes that ratio. And again, I just want to point out, this little pocket right here, we could either create under the sidewalk and create treatment area here. We could widen and extend this swale out a little bit and get treatment there, and like I said, my engineers have looked at it and said that we can certainly accomplish, if stormwater is the issue, we can accomplish what we need to in this area right here. Inside the property line, we would be required to dedicate a 10-foot utility drainage and sidewalk easement as part of the redevelopment, allowing me to leave this position here and not squish everything down and lose a parking stall. If you look, the, the right-of-way acquisition, in all likelihood, is going to push to the north, offsetting this intersection, maintaining these returns here and here, because any additional right-of-way acquisition here or to the east is going to create nonconformity with these ones here. We believe it's a reasonable request. The city of Hayden's typical and standard drawings do allow for modifications to the standards in, or as note number three of the standard drawings indicates, modifications to the typical sections may be proposed based on site limitations, redevelopment constraints, continuity of design with adjacent properties, transition zones between typical sections and other factors, and we believe that this applies. I understand Rob's position perfectly. We know this caveat exists, and I, and I understand that he really doesn't have any incentive to put his neck out there and say, yeah, I offered up a deviation from the standard without getting your guys' approval. And actually, I could understand that that would, you know, putting, put him in a position of having to explain why he did that, if anybody wanted to accuse him of offering up something to somebody and not to somebody else. Anyway, that's what we're trying to achieve here, we've put in a lot of work thus far. We've been at this for months, working hard with the architect, it's a very tight site. We're trying to bring that sort of boutique and smaller retail opportunity to people that might not be able to acquire a typical 1,500 or 2,000 square foot retail site. I know I moved quickly, I know it's confusing, I've been at this for like six months, so this is your first time looking at it. Do you guys have any questions?
I do have Rob one. I do have Rob.
Okay, Rob, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Terzulie, appreciate it.
Let me see if I got this correct, that the intersection design is going to push the right-of-way to the north, is that what, what you said, Jeremy?
That was the intersection design that I was provided, shows maintaining those returns to the south, and sort of offsetting it to the north.
Okay.
The future center line is probably 2 and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2 feet north of the middle of the right-of-way.
So of where it is now?
That's what, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's what's proposed. The, I think the existing curb return would be the future basic curb, and we're just trying to maintain some kind of continuity when we don't want to have to, to come back in front of you the next time, you know, someone else comes up and says, hey, we want to do something different with right-of-way, we want, we want to stick to our standards.
Okay, so you're recommending not?
That's why we're here.
Yeah, allowing, okay. So what would be, what would be losing, sidewalk or swale in that five, what is it, the four and 1/2 feet, what, what are we losing there, or what are we gaining, if they cut it off?
We are, we are losing the required swale area within the right-of-way.
Completely, or just more narrow than it?
Within six feet, you cannot get a swale bottom.
Yeah.
You got to slope down, you got to slope back up, you end up with a V-ditch.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So Rob, when you say, when you talk about the swales, and it doesn't meet city code, that's what DEQ is? Have they dictated, I guess the question is, have they dictated us the size, or what exactly did they dictate to us?
They, they have their own BMPs. Most recent times, they leave stormwater up to the local jurisdictions.
All right. And will it affect whether we do a roundabout or a light at that intersection?
We are planning on a signalized intersection there. Just the, the stormwater treatment, from what is being proposed, it would have to be something, something like a lot different. The, that six-foot strip, if it, it would end up being a V-ditch if it's conveyance, and that makes it more difficult to maintain.
And that particular swell, the city crews, is that their liability to take care of it? I know they're doing some of the other, but?
That would be, on government way, we are maintaining swales. On Miles, that would be a developer responsibility.
Is there a requirement for the developer to keep it green?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember White, you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering, would this decision have a domino effect on the properties to the south and the, I guess, the east of it?
It would. I, I can't predict the future.
Okay.
But others who would want to propose something different always have the opportunity to come before you if they don't agree with my decision. Keeping, keeping sidewalks straight and linear is important instead of, instead of a, if someone next door wants to propose something different, now, now your sidewalk might want to jut all the way back up to the curb, next one down, you know, it, it's, where does it end?
Any other? Councilmember Roder, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Have we, has the city spent, or her spent money on studying that intersection and, and also for design, a redesign of that intersection for the future for either light or roundabout?
Yes.
So?
Her reimbursed the city for the preliminary design.
So we, so there's been tax money, if you will, that's already been spent to design an intersection for that location in the tomb of, tomb of?
I, I can't recall.
So we've, we've already spent money to design that, and the applicant on the appeal is asking for a redesign of it?
No.
Oh, no? So the intersection would stay the same?
So?
Or the design?
So the preliminary design stopped at the curb return?
Oh, okay.
Jeremy, get me out of here.
Oh, you're not in slide mode anymore, but you go.
Okay, if you can follow my cursor, the, the preliminary design stopped at this curb return and matched existing paving because we had no right-of-way to the east to do anything more. We tried to stay within the confines of existing right-of-way and minimizing right-of-way that was required to, to be acquired.
So his, his proposal of the change doesn't affect that initial preliminary design?
No.
Okay, that's what I want to know, because I thought if there was a, you know, an option or to try to do something different, and we already spent money on it, you know, we have to change that. So that answers that question. Is there any, and Rob, I know that we try to accommodate developers and builders and try to make things work, is there any other option, or is it all based on the grassy swale issue? Is there anything else, a dry well, or is there anything else that could create or solve this problem? I know you've probably racked your brain on it, and he has too, but is there, is there any other possible solutions?
It's, for me, it came down to trying to maintain our standards, so, and, and I didn't, I didn't rack my brain trying to come up with a way to rearrange the site to make it work with the 16 feet. That's, that 16 feet was thrown out, and I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything come across my desk showing what it would look like with that 16 feet.
So is there a possibility that he, the design could be reconfigured for the site plan to make it work for what his goals are, but you haven't seen it, because it doesn't, it hasn't been presented? Is that a possibility to go through that process?
I think it is.
That's all I have.
Okay. Counsel?
One more. Just so that I, I believe I understand it. The road's going to push two to three or whatever feet north, is that widening the road eventually, is what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So the southern curb or edge of that road is not going to move north with it, the road is going to widen through whatever that three-foot number is.
Yes, so on the?
South curb's going to move north.
On the west leg, we have a three-lane section, two-lane, or one lane each direction, two-way turn lane in the center. two-way turn lane in the center. And then on the east side, we have a left turn bay and then one lane in each direction. And then we are transitioning back as we move further east to a two-lane section.
Yeah, but my question was, I want to make sure that as, it's not just shifting the road to the north, the southern edge of the road's going to stay the same. It's not going to be, it's not going to shift north to give them, no potential there to have?
Currently, currently, the, the southern edge of the road?
Right.
Is gonna, at, at this point, at this curb return is going to stay the same.
Right, okay, thank you.
I was hoping to maybe offer a little clarification, Councilman Roder.
Thank you.
We will redesign the site if the ultimate answer is 16 feet. This is not an ultimatum. This is not an all or nothing. This is, I will likely lose a parking stall. We're going to redesign and resubmit if your ultimate decision is to, what Rob has decided. I understand all positions. This was a, an inquiry to see if we could deviate from that standard, knowing that my engineers believe we can get, well, are confident that we can treat that stormwater. We don't even have to treat that V ditch as conveyance. We can keep it on the flow line of the curb, hit a scupper in and then go under the sidewalk. That's, we sat down and went over it a couple of different ways today, but again, I just want to reiterate, this isn't, this is a request. We're going to redesign the site if ultimately you uphold Rob's design standard. We'll see what we can do. Hopefully, we can do it without eliminating a parking stall or lopping off a little bit of the building, but that's all it is. It's just a request.
Can I follow up with one more question, Mayor?
Certainly. Council President Roder, go ahead.
My question is, if you feel like the, your, if you could redesign to the city's standards, that you can maintain the coffee shop, the drive-thru?
It's gonna, one of the design standards for drive-throughs in the city of Hayden requires five queuing stalls for every window. It's sort of a rough number, so you, you have to, there's no definitive this many feet. Five queuing stalls. So I went to the QSR, that, that's an abbreviation for quick serve restaurant standards. They say 20 foot per queuing stall. Some vehicles will be 19 feet, some will be 14 feet, there'll be a little space in between. It's a long-winded way of saying I'm pretty sure we can accommodate it. We're just gonna, we're gonna, that queuing to the south is going to get a little tight.
So I know that Hura provided money because the restaurant that was there was there for over 40 years and it wasn't, I don't even think it was used for 40 years. And so this is a really, I, I believe this is a great project. I, I sit on the Hayden, Hayden area, excuse me, Hayden Urban Renewal Agency, and I saw this as a good project to eliminate a blighted building because it was dilapidated and you saw the rendering. So do you think that the money that Hura gave you could maybe offset that parking spot in a way?
Well, we're going to build it no matter what.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to do this. I'm hoping to stick with the design that we presented because I'm going to have to spend, you know, a couple thousand more bucks redesigning it. We've had the architect hold off on his engineering because if we decide to squish that building by two feet, we're just sort of at a, at a standstill. And I'm just trying to find the guardrails right now as to when that deviation from standard could be implemented. We're, we're going to build it. I'm asking for five feet of relief so that we can go with what we've designed.
Does any other council member have any questions?
Yep.
Yes, Councilmember White.
Thank you. I was going to ask, what's the total square footage of the property?
Like six tenths of an acre. So what are we at, like 30,000 square feet, 28,000?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Council members, do you have any further discussion on this item?
I do need to disclose that had an ex parte communication with the coffee, proposed coffee shop owner, and that discussion didn't go into details like this, but I can say that I can look at this and make a decision objectively and not have a bias.
Thank you, Mr. Roder. There is no further discussion. I'd entertain a motion on the request to, to appeal the staff determination.
I, I'll make the motion that on the Marketplaces Miles LLC appeal a staff decision that we deny it.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst council members?
Sure, I'd like to make a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember DePree.
As usual, Jeremy, and from the presentation, it's going to be a quality product there. There's, there's no doubt about it.
Mr. Olson.
Yeah, you know, and again, as, as Rob stated, my decision is based on having to stay uniform and not really opening the door for, you know, people to be coming in and saying basically what you did this for them and people are going to want to, you know, that's just kind of how things work sometimes. But again, I, I just need to, I just need to say, I know you guys do quality work and it's just a matter of, we need to stay, I believe we need to stay with the city standards.
Any further discussion, council members? Hearing none may have a roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White? Yes. Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 3B, PZE 23-0002, a request to reconsider PZE 22-0218, the cur zone map amendment. Do we have a staff member or, or Mr. Lawyer?
I, I can.
Get some background.
Sure, just for the, for the public and for councils, so what's before you tonight is not an actual reconsideration. The decision point for you is, do you want to grant the applicant the opportunity to have a reconsideration hearing? And then the question is, would you wish for that hearing to be on the complete record and the complete request from before or narrowed to specific issues that have been identified in their request for reconsideration document? So the decision point tonight is just, do you wish to schedule a reconsideration hearing or, or deny their request for reconsideration, which then gives them their statutory remedies to move forward to a petition for judicial review?
Councilmember Discussion. Have any discussion from the council members? Hearing none. I would like to hear a motion from council regarding the request to reconsider the cur zone map amendment. Well, I can't do it, you, one of you guys has to.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the cur zone map amendment, just to make sure that we've covered all the bases and crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is.
I'll second it.
Count, just as a point of clarification, Councilmember Satterfield, would, would you clarify your motion to reopen the entire hearing or to reconsider based on the points that the, the applicant has made?
The points that they have brought up?
That they have brought up in their, in their request.
Yeah, I think just their points that they brought up, just so we can clarify it. I'm kind of speaking out loud here, but there were some other comments made that should be clarified as well, and in order to address those, we'd have to open up it for a new hearing. Am I correct?
Correct. If you are suggesting that your motion includes all four points, all four of reconsideration points that have been submitted as well as anything outside of that as well, then you would have a new hearing on the entirety of the application.
I think we're going to have to have a new, in my mind, a new hearing to address all of the issues, to make sure that we've covered everything. So that's what I'm proposing.
My second still stands based on that clarification.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, further discussion from council? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White? No. Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council, can you give us some ideas as to when we may be able to rehear this, this issue?
We'll have to look at the public hearing calendar that's already outlined, and, you know, we have a map for all the coming, upcoming public hearings.
I know we're going to have to republish this in the, in the newspaper, too.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Item 3C, the Honeysuckle Glade First Edition Release of Deed Restrictions.
On your last question, we're just quickly, it's likely going to be the last meeting in March for that public hearing.
Last, okay, last meeting in March. Okay, thank you. Moving along, item 3C, the Honeysuckle Glade First Edition Release of Deed Restrictions. We have a staff member that can help us with that?
So Honeysuckle Glade is a planned unit development that was entirely built with all the infrastructure and the roads and all utilities were in place. And as part of Honeysuckle Glade First Edition, that was a replat that actually reduced the density in Honeysuckle Glade, and it platted single-family residential lots. But as such, it created more lots than what were originally there because the previous lots were multifamily lots, and so they had to put in additional utility infrastructure to each of those lots. So as part of those, approval of that Honeysuckle Glade First Edition plat, they put deed restrictions on each of those lots that didn't have their utility infrastructure to those lots until such time as that infrastructure was approved. And that infrastructure was approved in a previous city council meeting, December, January-ish. And so since that condition and their warranty is now in place and all of those conditions were met for the deed restrictions, so since all those conditions have been met, we can now release those deed restrictions, and that's what this is before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Does council have questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion on the Honeysuckle Glade First Edition Release of Deed Restrictions. Councilmember?
Yeah, I would, I would move to approve Honeysuckle Glade First Edition Release of Deed Restrictions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment or discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 3B, the National Opioid Settlement Agreement Participation. City Clerk Abby Sanchez, can you please give us some background on that?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So in your packet, you had memo that is, includes all the information that I have for you. The, just to give a little bit of a background, in 2021, the state of Idaho joined two national opioid settlements, and at that time, the city chose to participate in those settlements. And the, the portion that the city was to receive from those settlements over, I think the term was 18 years, that those, the companies that were, that settled, had to pay was about 18 years. And so the city's portion was very small, and we chose to allocate those funds at that time to Panhandle Health District to be combined with the funds that they received and used in accordance with the approved uses for opioid abatement. Now, this, in December of 2022, the state of Idaho joined five additional settlements. These settlements are with three pharmacies, which are CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart, and two opioid manufacturers, Teva Pharmaceutical Industries and Allergan? And so if the city would like to participate in those settlements, we need to make, the council would need to approve that. And then also, our portion of those funds for the, these five additional settlements is approximately $1,700, and I believe these, the pharmacies and the opioid manufacturers has approximately 15 years to pay that amount.
So to clarify, we would receive $1,700 over 15 years?
Yes. Not $1,700 a year, but 1,700 that could, they have 15 years to pay that back. So if council chooses to participate in those agreements, they, and would like to allocate the city's portion of funds to Panhandle Health District, they would need to make that decision as well.
All right.
Include that in their decision.
Thank you for that background. Council Discussion. Comments, questions? Councilmember White?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. So I didn't realize this was stretched over so many years, but I, I do have an alternate option that I would like to propose to the council. I've been following the Panhandle Health meetings, and in the last meeting, they had, they said they had over a million dollars in surplus in the opioid funds. So I was thinking we could put it maybe somewhere else where it would be put to better use. And the sheriff's K-9 patrol does a lot for the community in stopping the opioid problem on the streets. So I was, and I noticed in social media that they just lost one of their dogs recently. So, yeah, their dog Halo passed away. So I was just, I spoke to the liaison at the sheriff's department, and they said that they depend solely on donations for purchasing dogs and equipment. So I'd like to propose that we give it to the sheriff instead of Panhandle Health at this time.
Comment, discussion from other council members?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember DePree.
I'm, I'm going to guess that there are restrictions or whatever. Would that be allowable? Would Councilmember White's suggestion be allowable under the parameters of the?
We'd have to probably go back and look. I think so. I mean, we, we weren't required to go to Panhandle Health. They just have had programs in place in relation to this, and it was a small amount for us to deal with it, would cost us more in hours just to set something up. So the idea of giving it to an organization that already has something in place is fine. We'd have to go back and look and contact the sheriff and see if whether or not they're in a position they can accept that, and then they'd be responsible because there are very specific requirements on how they use it according to the settlement. And it would just, that's why for, for us, it just doesn't make sense for us to track it, come up with a program and do things, so.
Well, that's kind of my question. I mean, I would, would we, I'm, I'm going to guess the sheriff would say, yeah, we'll take it, but will the, will whoever, the National Opioid Settlement, whoever the, whoever the money's coming from and putting the parameters on how you can use it, would they view that as being within the, the guidelines of usage?
I think as long as it's going towards some kind of, you know, the opioid abatement, it's probably fine, but we would have to check on that. We'd have to spend some more time and review that. We just knew that Panhandle Health had programs, and so that we just checked with them.
And, and just a point of clarification, Councilmember White is correct. The sheriff's office K-9 program runs exclusively on donations. It is not funded by the sheriff's department, so it's not as if the funds would go to the sheriff, to the sheriff's office. We'd be really clear that if that's an appropriate program to donate those funds to, for clarification of this record, that is a 100% donation funded program.
If, if I might make a suggestion to council that we continue discussion on this till next council meeting, just to check and see if we can legally do that, and then if, if that falls within the parameters, and make a decision at that point.
I'd like to make a comment. I like the idea.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I like the idea if we, if it meets the requirements of funding, but it does say prevention, and I think, to me, that, that sounds like it should. So I, I like the idea. The, the other question I had is, what does it cost the city to manage this? Is it, you know, there are many hours that we have to, for such a little amount of money for this pass-through money?
Is it, are there many hours that we have to, for such little amount of money, for this pass-through money?
Um, you know, it would take us some hours to do that. That's why we're saying it's not worth it for us to, to, to take this on internally and manage it and report on it, that let's give it to an organization that's already set up to, to.
Can we just pass it on though, without us really doing much with it?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay.
Other than if, if, if we move forward with this, then we'll have to probably have, check into the requirements a little further and see if it's okay for nonprofit in that regards to taking that. Wait, I don't, sitting here, I don't know.
You could make a motion tonight to participate with the caveat that if you all agree that it go to the, um, canine, the sheriff's department canine program, and only if that is not eligible, that it go to Panhandle Health. You could make a motion like that so it's not clogging up your next agenda.
I'd like to make a motion, know if there's any more discussion, I guess.
Is there any more discussion, council?
I'd like to make, to make a motion, what she said. No. So basically that we approve participation, uh, with the plan to go to the sheriff's canine fund if it is allowable by the parameters of the program.
And if not?
And if not, that it goes to Panhandle Health.
Good job.
Good.
You have a second?
I second.
We have a second, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Motion passes. And I'd like to compliment the city clerk. I, I know she has put an extraordinary amount of time into $1,700 over 15 years. That was some, that was some.
Make one more comment?
Yes, ma'am.
So just, uh, to share information with the council and with the public, the, uh, Panhandle Health District is currently, um, they are currently accepting applications for different programs to utilize these funds that meet the, um, abatement qualifications. And they, it looks like they are reviewing them quarterly. So it's kind of an open, open application.
Thank you very much. Item 3E, the appointment of Joy Richards to the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency Board. About four or five weeks ago, we, we opened up a, an opportu, with an opening on the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency Board, the Hura Board. Uh, we were, we received four applications and, uh, city administrator Boyer and I had the opportunity to interview all of the applicants. They are an excellent group of applicants, every one of them. We had, we had excellent meetings with them and, uh, we, it was a difficult choice. Excellent candidates, one and all, and thank you all very much, the candidates that came forward. Thank you very much for doing so. Um, in the end, uh, my nomination is Joy Richards to be on the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency. Do we have any discussion or comment? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, please, Abby.
No, you need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's have a motion. Councilmember DePree, thank you all.
I would motion to approve the appointment of Joy Richards to Hayden Urban Renewal Agency Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree?
Yes. Motion passes. Our next section is reports. I, yeah. Boyer?
City Administrator, report. You, um, I usually give you a, a monthly report and, um, with the things that are going, I, I was, I should get one more report here soon and, and then you'll get that, uh, here shortly. But, but I wanted to mention the state of the city, uh, address will be next month, or next week, on the 23rd, 11:30 noon with the Chamber of Commerce.
Is that on my calendar?
I hope so because you're the keynote.
Did you have a speechwriter?
And, and so I think Abby has reached out to all of you to, to see who's going. So we'll have a, a group representing the city as well. So, um, it's an interesting time for the mayor and council to be there and kind of report on what's going on in the city and, so it's interesting. Um, other than that, um, I did, I did send you an email today too on a meeting coming up with, concerning Harbs, the three parties. If, if you respond to that, that'd be appreciated on timing. So, uh, other than that, I'll leave it there, um, for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Members of council, roundtable discussion? Councilmember White?
Yes. Well, I just wanted to say I, I am representing the, the city of Hayden on the KMPO, which is the, uh, Kootenay Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I attended my first meeting last week. Uh, and one item that was discussed is possible traffic management center facility and operation plan. And that's gonna involve cameras watching the traffic. So I'm gonna be finding out more about that in the future. And if anybody would like to join me at these meetings, feel free to come and observe. These meetings are not recorded, so you'd need to come to get the information. They meet once a month, second Thursdays, uh, at 1:30 at the Postpony City Hall.
Thank you. For your information.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember DePree? Just one comment here. I know I've talked about it numerous times and to tag along the traffic there. Uh, traffic impact analysis workshop, something like that. Is there any, um, plan for that, uh, in the, in the near future? I believe we've already kind of agreed to kind of have it, but it seems to be getting pushed down and almost everything that comes up now is traffic, 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 traffic. So I really think we need to look at the traffic.
Okay. We'll put it on. We also need a, a workshop on priorities too. We were gonna get through tonight and we'll, we'll be asking for a, a workshop, hopefully at the, at the next meeting, probably prior to. Let us work, work on a couple of things and we'll get back to you on that.
Sure. Yeah, Brett's desk is getting longer and longer of folders of things that, that council would like him to take a look at and he'd like to get some, uh, some direction on priorities. Councilmember White?
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, that brings to mind that I would also like us to be able to take another look at the future land just map because that also comes up quite often in our conversations. And, um, even the Planning and Zoning Commission has commented that we need to take another look at that.
Anything else? Thank you, Mayor. Council President Roder?
Um, I sit on the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency. Sometimes I get that mixed up with Harbs, you know, man, but, but that's our sewer, um, plant out there. But, which I sit on that board also with Roger. Uh, we, the, the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency, as Mr. McIntyre mentioned tonight, is, uh, interested in helping the city with infrastructure costs. And we, as everybody knows, that the, the traffic issue is, in my mind, number one issue in our city, uh, which is related to growth. And so, um, the Urban Renewal Agency has a life until 2029. Uh, it's allowed to expand its district. We have one geographic, uh, district that's contiguous and we can enlarge it and it can't be more than 10% of the assessed value of the whole city and it can't be more than 10% of the area of the whole city. So we're looking at ways to increase it. And I just want to make it clear that my position is that I want to look at whatever land that we expand for Urban Renewal Agency is for just to improve those intersections along government way. That's, uh, there's enormous cost, uh, the end of the district. By the time we get to the end, uh, we'll probably bring in $12 million. We have about five right now. And so when you look at the cost of these intersections where our Hura can help, the city needs to maybe give us, Eden Area, uh, the Harbs Board, a priority on where that funding could go. And I think we're, that's where I'm going with, that's where my position is. The rest of the board, there's talk about community center and so forth, but the, the, those intersections are really critical. And, uh, so I just wanted to say that it's something we're working on. Um, I'm pushing for road, uh, to fix our roads and to improve them. And, uh, we have a limited time. Seven, uh, six years left in the term of the board of the Urban Renewal Agency can go really fast when you're planning to do projects like this. So we really want my orders from the city and make that clear to Harbs.
See, I told you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, but I have a motion to adjourn. We stand, we stand adjourned and happy Valentine's Day, ladies and gentlemen.
And everybody, there's candy on the back. Please help yourself to.